I apologize. We'll call to order the legislative work session for tonight, which is June the 17th, for the City of Douglasville. We've already done our pledge allegiance and our invocation, so we will move on with the protocol for the meeting, and then we will start with our agenda as it's printed. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday at 6:00 PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the item comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. Just a few more protocol issues I'd like to bring to your attention. I would ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You'll receive a warning from the Chair, and if you deviate from this requirement for a second time, we will discontinue having you speak, turning your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on conversations with others in the audience or be disruptive. We ask that you would please make all of your comments directed to the Chair of that committee, or to myself if it's under comments from Citizens and Delegates. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings and on zoning matters. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please, we ask that you would put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda will take place. The agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then that person or representation of, the representative for that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. This will be your first and only time and opportunity to present. Then myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help us receive more information. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in opposition and 20 minutes for those in support, and each person has five minutes to speak. If there are more people than four or five to speak, you can divide your time up three minutes or so for every person, but in totality, you have 20 minutes per side. There is a speaker form that we should have filled out, and you present that form to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right, to put into the record. Ms. Jackson, I know we're still under the governor's orders for, we can do hybrid meetings. Do we have anyone online? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Chelsea. Prior to approaching the podium, please give us the card to the city clerk. When you come forward, give us your name and address for the record. This is not a debate or question-answer format. We are really here just to receive your information and take that into consideration if we have to make a decision on the information that you present. I believe that's it. So, again, when you come forward, give your name and address for the record, and if you have any printed materials, please hand those to Ms. Acker, and she will make certain that we get those and have those in our iPad, or have those to have personally in our hands. So, we'll move on now. We do have a presentation honoring Frederick Douglass by Dr. Robin Zungina Ortega, and if I pronounce your name incorrectly, please, please forgive me, and you can correct me and pronounce it.
I forgive you. It's Sunyega?
Yes, ma'am.
Which you probably don't want to try, so that's okay.
PhD in education and psychology, University of Massachusetts, President of Douglas Women Unite, and this is a announcement and presentation from Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Yes. Thank you for having us today.
Yes, ma'am.
And I am, one other correction. I am the President of Douglas Women Unite, but I'm actually here today for a group of citizens of Douglasville and Douglas County, a committee to honor Frederick Douglass. And I'm going to start by showing you a video.
What's in a name? One metro Atlanta family believes a lot after learning Douglas County was originally named for the great freedom fighter and orator Frederick Douglass.
I didn't know that. It's a fact that many people had never...
Jason, can we start again? Once, give the council an opportunity to come around. I apologize. I didn't know we were watching a video. I thought we had it on our pads.
What's in a name? One metro Atlanta family believes a lot after learning Douglas County was originally named for the great freedom fighter and orator Frederick Douglass.
I didn't know that. It's a fact that many people had never heard before. And as we conclude our month-long closer look at Black History, Black Lives Alliance Proctor talks to a Douglas heir who plans to make a monumental proposal.
Douglas County was created in 1870 during the Reconstruction period, right after the Civil War. To a lot of people's surprise, we found out the county was named for Frederick Douglass. The abolitionist known worldwide.
Douglas County is a flourishing bedroom community just 30 minutes west of downtown Atlanta. The thriving suburban county boasts a population of 140,000 people, where the demographics are constantly changing. Douglas County is now 45% African-American.
We are a family in Douglas County.
When I call your name...
Meet the county's first-ever elected African-American Commission Chair, Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones. We uncovered a little-known Black History fact. Georgia history indicates the county was first named for a man who was born into slavery, but became one of the most respected abolitionists this nation has ever seen: Frederick Douglass.
If you Google Douglas County, or if you go to any internet site, it's there. It's not hidden.
And what's your reaction to that?
To realize and see that this county was named after Frederick Douglass, it tells me that we were prepared for diversity many years ago.
In fact, the year was 1870. The Civil War had just ended, and many African-Americans were serving in the Georgia Legislature. They decided to name the large 201-square-mile area that was sparsely populated Douglas.
The legislation to create Douglas County was signed on Monday, October 17, 1870, by Governor Rufus Bullock. According to the official documents housed by the State of Georgia within its archives, Douglas County was spelled with two S's at the time of the governor's signature. You can see it here on the original act creating Douglas County. Here you can see the governor's signature on the original document. And here you can see Douglas County on an 1871 map of the State of Georgia, also spelled with two S's.
I'm the great-granddaughter. My full name is Nettie Washington Douglas.
But when the Confederate Republicans expelled the Reconstruction lawmakers and regained power, they changed the county name to honor Stephen A. Douglas, an Illinois senator who lost the presidency to Abraham Lincoln. But this Douglas family ancestor has an idea, she believes, whose time has come.
I would love to see it changed back. I really would.
Ms. Washington Douglas says a couple of Douglas County residents have approached her wanting to change the name back as well.
While possibly changing it back may not be something that can be done, but I think that it should be noted somewhere on a plaque, you know, on the Douglas County Government Building, acknowledging that it was originally for Frederick Douglass.
It'd be worth considering.
The new Commission Chair says, in keeping with her platform of transparency and diversity, she is willing to listen.
That's something worth thinking about.
In keeping with the wishes of Nettie Washington Douglas, the Citizens Committee to Honor Frederick Douglass is asking for things from the City of Douglasville and the County of Douglas. We would like the proclamation from the City and the County naming the second Saturday of February of each year, starting in 2022, Frederick Douglass Day, which would feature a celebration and public history and school and educational activities in the county. We are working with the County Board of Education to introduce education curriculum about county history, including Frederick Douglass and the Black State legislators who made the county possible, and create a monument to Frederick Douglass placed in an appropriate location in the city and county. We'd also like to see the name of Frederick Douglass placed on a thoroughfare, either a street or a walking trail within Douglas County. We know that there are plans to create a history trail, and we think that would be probably the most appropriate thing to be named after Frederick Douglass. But there are a lot of other new things that are being named recently, including the Highway 92 bypass and New City Street. We're not interested in competing with any other names that might be put forward. We just want to see the full history embraced of the county and the city. So, we leave it up to your discretion as to what is the most appropriate. But we do want to see Frederick Douglass honored in the city. We already saw the evidence that the act that originally created the county was named after Frederick Douglass. There is no mistake in that. Some people may say that it was a typo, but it was consistent. It was consistent in the legislation and in the act. And it was not asked to be changed by the sponsor, Representative Zellers, at any time during the act's passage and signing. And it stayed Douglas County until the 1870s, when, as the video says, after Reconstruction, the name was changed to Douglas and the S was dropped. Honoring Frederick Douglass is not the only thing that we're asking, because if we do those four things that we ask, it will also honor these Black legislators. There were 22 Black legislators that voted for the creation of the county in 1870. There were 32 total that were in the Legislature at the time. Only 22 were there, because many of them had to risk life and limb even to get to the Capitol to vote, and some of them died trying to be, as they, doing their legislative duties. And so, we feel that they especially need to be honored and remembered. Now, I want to introduce Mike Glenn. You all know who he is. I just noticed I don't need to tell you who he is in terms of the NBA and the Hawks, but he is also an expert on Frederick Douglass's history and has collected memorabilia on Frederick Douglass, and I'd like to have him have a chance to speak in support of this effort.
Mr. Glenn, we're going to come back.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Glenn.
Okay. Hello. I am Mike Glenn, known as the Stinger, because I was a jump shooter that stung the net when I shot. But anyway, I apologize for...
Oh, you have to talk to us.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, I apologize for my tie. I was just in a meeting about my basketball account for deaf kids, which starts next week, and ran really long, and I did not have time to go back and change as I had planned to do.
Yes, sir. If you can give us your address, Mr. Glenn, for the, yes, sir. So, we have your names, Mike Glenn, and your address.
Mike Glenn, my address, the home address, you mean?
Yes, or your business.
Okay. 3571 Kilpatrick Lane in Snellville, Georgia, is where I live now, and I am Mike Glenn. And as you mentioned, I am a collector of rare books, newspapers, magazines, and other documents of African-American history and culture, and I am a Frederick Douglass scholar. I've written a book about him, and I've taken exhibits to many states across the country, as far as California, New York, Mexico, Illinois, Indiana. First edition documents, Frederick Douglass paper, newspapers. Not just Douglass, all African-American history and culture. And I did one here in 2008. I did an exhibit called the Legacy, Living Legacy of Frederick Douglass. Ashman arranged for me to have that exhibit, and we had also programmed at the church here in 2008. And among the things that I've collected, not only his books and newspapers, but I do have two original maps from that time period that was referenced from 1870 to 1874, where Douglas County was spelled, and I've often exhibited those, and I have them at my house now, where Douglas County was spelled with two S's, and also Douglasville was spelled with two S's as well in those original maps that I have at my home now. Not reproductions, all original things. So, I think that it's very important. I think, from all my studies of Douglass, I think he was the greatest orator in American history. I think the speech he gave, what, to the slavers, the Fourth of July, is even greater than Dr. King's speech, and I think he was a greater speaker than Dr. King. I think he really was one of the most significant and important historical figures in American history. And I think Douglas County and the state of Georgia would be honored to have this state having a connection with Frederick Douglass. Would be one of the few states to do such a thing. Maryland has really done a lot of things to promote their relationship with Frederick Douglass, but I'd be honored to see that happen here. And I've spoken at many museums and colleges and universities on Frederick Douglass, so I really salute the effort that they're doing to educate and know what he believed in, what he taught, what he stood for, what he lived, what he lived for. And Blight, who wrote the recent book, The One who Flew the Surprise, is a friend also. So, I think it's really appropriate. The timing is right for people to learn the truth, the history, and learn from the history by knowing the history. So, I think it would promote other educational things that would be very valuable to the community, the state, for everyone to know the things that Douglass was fighting for. They're very relevant today as they were during his lifetime. So, I totally support this, and I'd be willing to even bring my exhibit back, where I had just a lot of items that I do in various places, that, original items that really show what Frederick Douglass was about, and what he was saying, and why he is so important then and today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I will leave it at that.
Thank you so much. This is Dr. Burdanley's committee, so, item.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glenn, and thank you, Ms. Robin. Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor and Council, for just listening to the presentation. I know that there have been a lot of controversy between whether or not Frederick Douglass, Douglas County, was named after Frederick Douglass. And I support the efforts of recognizing Frederick Douglass, even for those that may not believe or understand the documentation. For myself as an African-American, I think it is very important that we recognize those leaders, not just African-American, but African-Americans, but others as well. So, after listening to the presentation, and thank you, Madam Mayor, you have, the mayor has actually given each one of us a copy of another historian, Ms. Lisa Cooper's documentation of that Frederick Douglass was not, Douglas County was not named after Frederick Douglass. Thank you for that information, Madam Mayor. So, but I just wanted to say that we have discussed, and when I say "we," the mayor and council in our recent retreat, the name of the bypass, although we have not voted on it, but we also have discussed naming streets as well as a trail. So, we have, the City of Douglasville has hired a consultant to assist with the economic development on the north side of town, which is now also referred as New Horizon. And there will be a trail. Councilman Davis and I have spoken very much about that. That's the ward in which we serve. And we'd like to see history, a history trail, that would include Frederick Douglass, other locals, and possibly other nationals. For those that may not know, that during the time that Dr. King was going to DC for his famous speech, the mule train actually stopped where Stewart Middle School track is, way before my time. But my grandparents and my mom during that time, and Councilman Davis' family actually fed those that were there. So, also incorporating history about that, I think, would be very appropriate for the history of our ward, as well as those that come after us, to make acknowledge and also to reference that, whether you believe or not, that Douglas County was named after Frederick Douglass. I think it would be missable for us not to acknowledge Frederick Douglass, because he did have a very big heart, and he did great things as it relates to Georgia, period. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that at the beginning of the meeting, I said, if, you know, those in favor and opposition, this is not a public hearing, but the information that was given was from Ms. Cooper. And as we do with zoning matters and other issues, we present those are, that have opposing opinions about any issue. So, I did not want Ms. Cooper to send the information. I did not want to negate what she presented to us, and so, that's why I had given that information. I know we did talk at our retreat about Highway 92, and Dr. Robin said that maybe the most appropriate representation would be a trail. The Highway 92, we were discussing Mr. Steele, who was the first African-American superintendent, and that was a name that, of course, we have to vote on all these things, but just to put that information out to the public, that Mr. Steele, I know he does have the freshman academy at Douglas County High School, but we were thinking about after the state turned that highway, highway back over to the city, or to the city, that we would name that after Mr. Steele. And that was one of the names that it seems like it's a race, and that one is, is ahead a little bit. But we will take all this information into consideration, and we appreciate the information coming from, I'm trying to get the group.
Douglas Women Unite.
Douglas Women Unite. It's not on the thing. Douglas Women Unite and Ms. Cooper.
Citizens Committee to Honor Frederick Douglass.
Yes, ma'am.
Make up that wall.
Okay.
Right.
President of Douglas Women Unite.
Yes. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I would like to, although the presentation was made tonight, and we will have a drive-through with the mayor and council on Monday, the 21st, which is also our voting meeting, I would like to ask that this item be put on the agenda for Monday for a vote, if we're going to do a trail, or also to celebrate Frederick Douglass this upcoming Black History Month of 20, February 2022.
Okay. So, that would be your recommendation inside of the, the agenda item, is the trail and a proclamation, or?
The proclamation.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we'll have that on our agenda item for, for Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from council members? Dr. Burdanley, did you want people from the audience to say anything, or Ms. Cooper?
I think appropriately, it would be, in citizen comments, and we just go on with our regular agenda as it is.
All right. Thank you so much. So, that's all you have from this announcements and presentations. We'll move on to item number five, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items under the Economic Development Committee tonight at this time. The first is to appoint Carol Burton as the Downtown Development Authority's nominee to the City of Douglasville's Urban Redevelopment Agency to serve an unexpired term, which will be expiring on January 3, 2023. Ms. Chelsea Jackson, you have some information.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As you all know, for the ERA, it has seven board, seven board members on that board, and two are from the Douglasville Downtown Development Authority. So, at the last meeting of the DDA, they did nominate two individuals to serve in that position, and this first one is Ms. Carol Burton.
Perhaps I should have read them together, I suppose. So, I'll jump to the second one, then, if you indulge me, and that is to appoint David A. Wilson as the Downtown Development Authority's nominee to the City of Douglasville's Urban Redevelopment Agency to serve a term expiring also on January, oh, I'm sorry, no, expiring on January 3, 2025.
Yes. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. The DDA also voted to nominate Mr. David A. Wilson to serve in that second position on the Urban Redevelopment Agency.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone on City Council? Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any objections to putting this on the consent agenda on Monday? Okay. Then we will so do that. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll move on then to item number six, which is Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Finance. Authorize the mayor to accept a donation of 1.09 acres of real property located in Land Lot 737, District 1, Section 3, and adjacent to Jesse Davis Park from F. and F. Enterprises LLC, in honor of Councilmember Sam Davis' service to the community and to sign documents related to the transaction. Ms. Woodward, can you help us with that?
Thank you, Chairman. Adam? The description is pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Dotson has been in contact with FNF...
Hold on for one second, Attorney Woodward. Councilman Davis? Thank you, but I don't want to get him in any ethic.
Go practice your dancing.
I know it. Have a conflict of interest. All right. Thank you so much. I apologize, Ms. Woodward. I didn't mean to be rude and interrupt you in the middle of your sentence.
No problem. So, the title is pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Dotson, he was the main contact with FNF Enterprises, and I defer to Mr. Dotson for more background information.
You have a map of a property that's adjacent to Jesse Davis Park. FNF is owned by Chris Beecham, who many of you probably know, a local businessman. He wants to make the donation in honor of Mr. Davis' steadfast leadership and tiring service to the community.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Thank you.
Where is this property? I'm looking. I don't have...
It's on the map, Mr.?
Yep.
It appears, Dr. Burdanley, that this is a piece of property that we, as a city at one time, may have had an interest in purchasing.
Right.
Is that correct? That is adjacent to?
It's been a time ago. It's been several years. It wasn't owned by Mr. Beecham at that time, but we did have conversations with the owner about acquiring it.
Yes.
We never got together on it.
Got you.
Looks as though it runs along the right-of-way, north of the Hawthorne Building, up, the name of the street, I'm out of law. Malone, that's correct. So, it would sit up behind the part of the football stadium.
Hmm. Got you. That's right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I did have a question. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Dotson, we will receive the, the land in honor of Mr. Davis. Is, are we going to put a placard up, or how does, is that our, under our discretion?
Well, that would be up to whatever the city wants to do with anything.
Okay.
The order of business now is to, is to authorize you to accept that donation. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, are we going to have, I assume, then, a future conversation as to what we, how we'll dispose of the, not dispose, but, you know, what we'll do with the property? So, I guess, potentially including it, including it as part of the park is a possibility, I suspect?
I would assume so.
No, it would be a motion of logic for this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Others?
Okay. One last question, Mr.?
Yes, go ahead.
Is the property completely undeveloped at this time? Is there anything, any structures on it?
It's vacant, as far as I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I will not play...
Go practice your dancing.
I know it. Have a conflict of interest. All right. Thank you so much. I apologize, Ms. Woodward. I didn't mean to be rude and interrupt you in the middle of your sentence.
No problem. So the title is pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Dotson, he was the main contact with FNF Enterprises, and I defer to Mr. Dotson for more background information.
You have a map of a property that's adjacent to Jesse Davis Park. FNF is owned by Chris Beecham, who many of you probably know, a local businessman. He wants to make the donation in honor of Mr. Davis' steadfast leadership and tireless service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Thank you.
Where is this property? I'm looking. I don't have-
It's on the map, Mr.?
Yep.
It appears, Dr. Burdanley, that this is a piece of property that we, as a city, at one time, may have had an interest in purchasing. Is that correct? That is adjacent to?
It's been a time ago. It's been several years. It wasn't owned by Mr. Beecham at that time, but we did have conversations with the owner about acquiring. We never got together on.
Looks as though it runs along the right-of-way north of the Hawthorne Building, up, the name of the street, I'm out of law. Malone, that's correct. So it would sit up behind the part of the football stadium.
Gotcha. That's right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I did have a question. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Dotson, we will receive the land in honor of Mr. Davis. Is, are we going to put a placard up? Or how does, is that our discretion?
That would be up to whatever the city wants to do of anything.
Okay.
The order of business now is to authorize you to accept that donation. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
So are we going to have, I assume, then, a future conversation as to what we, how we'll dispose of the, not dispose, but what we'll do with the property? I guess potentially including it, including it as part of the park is a possibility, I suspect.
I would assume so.
No, it would be a motion of law if it was.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Others? Okay.
One last question, Mr.?
Yes, go ahead.
Is the property completely undeveloped at this time? Is there anything, any structures on it?
It's vacant, as far as I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I will not place that on the consent agenda, but that's the only thing that we had under Finance tonight, Madam Mayor, so we'll take that up on Monday.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. If someone can please let Councilmember Davis know that he can come back in. Thank you so much, Ms. Emily. We'll move on then to item number seven, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an item that we discussed in our committee meeting earlier. One item is authorize the mayor to sign the emergency shelter grant application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs in support of Vision 21 Concept Incorporated. Ms. Hampton?
Dr. Burdanley, a mayor and council, this item is a grant application that is typically passed through for the shelter. We do this annually every year for Vision 21. It's a similar type of grant that we've done for the past few years.
Is there anyone here from Vision 21?
I don't see anyone in the audience. No, ma'am. I could ask them to be here on Monday if you have further questions.
All right. Thank you. No other business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on then to item number eight, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I just have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight. Authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the Medical Services Agreement with, looks like a type of premier health employer solutions. Is that pronounced right?
Premise.
Premise, my.
Yes, sir.
Premise. I apologize. Agreement with Premise Health Employer Solutions LLC, formerly known as Care Here Management PLLC, to provide onsite medical services to city employees' dependents. And Mr. Westfield will take it.
Dr. Brian Westfield, 6695 Church Street. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. This amendment authorizes dependents, of course, to use the wellness center effect of the 1st of July, 2021. This would add roughly 127 children and about 45 spouses to the authorization roles. So subject to any questions, that's all I have.
Does anyone on the council, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Westfield.
Yes, ma'am.
The hours of operations, are they going to change? Are they going to stay the same? We have to call in advance and how? I have three college students at home, so this is going to be great for me.
There is no anticipated change in the hours. As far as the scheduling, that would be done the same way our employees do it. So that's done via an app or through phone call.
Okay.
Same process.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, anyone else? Any questions? Anybody? All right. Well, Dr. Westfield, we appreciate HR, all their efforts in getting all this done and worked out, and I know the employees will enjoy being able to take advantage of that. And I would like to place this on the consent agenda, if that would be okay. Thank you, Dr. Westfield. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had tonight.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under Planning and Development. We'll start with item A and hold a public hearing. Consider a request for change in zoning from R3, single-family residential detached, to GC, general commercial district, for 3.63 acres at 5626 Highway 92, Land Lot 53, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 49. Application by Noel DeMello, care of Hakeem Hilliard. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. The applicant seeks to develop the subject property with an 84-room hotel, as well as a separate 8,400 square feet multi-use building, with 86 onsite parking spaces for the hotel and 42 spaces for the multi-use building. The applicant has not identified the specific uses to be located in the multi-use building. It is anticipated that the building will attract a diversity of uses that will complement the person visiting the hotel, as well as the needs of the nearby residents. The proposed project introduces a new hotel with a multipurpose building into an area that could be considered economically challenged. The proposed hotel and multipurpose building will complement the immediate area while providing transient visitors near the city's downtown area with possible disposable income to support some of the businesses in and around the target area. The proposed project can possibly spur an increase in new development activity near and serve as a catalyst for additional complementary, complementary commercial development. The proposed rezoning to GC will be consistent with the intent and purpose of the UDO. The surrounding zoning on the north side, you have general commercial. South of the subject property, you have general commercial. East of the subject property, you have Interstate 20. And west of the commercial, west of the subject property, you have general commercial. The subject property is identified as part of a community activity character area on the city of Douglasville land use map. And GC is one of the preferred zoning districts for the community activity center character area. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use designation for community activity center. The purpose of the community activity center is to provide for areas that can meet the immediate needs of several neighborhoods or communities. This development meets that goal by providing a hotel and multi-use building to meet the needs of the citizens in the surrounding communities. The applicant's proposal is compatible with the purpose and intent of the most recent comprehensive plan. On June 1st, 2021, the planning commission voted to approve the project unanimously. Finally, the proposed rezoning to, from R3 to GC meets the standards subscribed by the city's UDO, and is also consistent with the city's comp plan and land use map. As a result, staff recommends approval of the project.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Anderson. Is the applicant here, applicant's representative here to present your information to us, sir? Give us your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hakeem Hilliard with Hilliard Starkey Law, 260 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30303. I'm here this evening with Mrs. Cavita DeMello, who's going to represent the applicant tonight. I was just going to take a few minutes to talk to you a little bit about the proposal, and then let Ms. DeMello tell you a little bit more details about the hotel. I'm excited to be here with you this evening. Again, as Mr. Anderson described, this property is about 3.63 acres of land, right at the intersection of Fairburn Road and I-20. It's undeveloped land. And if you've seen the zoning map, you'll know that it's a piece of R3, single-family land, and out of character with everything around it. Everything around it is GC, and it's located in the community activity center. So we believe it's an appropriate zoning to go to GC for that reason, because it's not appropriate for a single family anymore. We're proposing an 84-room, four-story hotel with 86 parking spaces dedicated to the hotel use, and a multipurpose building of 8,400 square feet with 42 spaces dedicated to that use. As was described by Mr. Anderson, the uses that would be located in the multipurpose building have not been determined as of yet, but the goal is to occupy that space with complementary uses for the hotel patrons. We're talking about restaurant uses and other ancillary uses that would be supportive of that uses. If you've seen the site plan, you'll know that there's one drive coming from Fairburn Road into the site. That area, I know Mr. Anderson described it as depressed, but it's, but we're excited about being in that area, and we think that that drive that dedicates this area just for the hotel and the patrons around there will add an element to quality to what we're proposing to develop there. The R3 zoning, as I said, everything around it is zoned RGC. It abuts I-20 and Fairburn Road. It's consistent with the comprehensive development plan. And although, as, there may be some economic challenges in the area, we know that development is moving this way, as it's moving outside of the city of Atlanta. It represents a lot of hotels that are developing in the city limits of Atlanta, and I was telling Cavita just now that there, on record, 150 blackout weekends in Atlanta where at least one weekend evening, every hotel room in the city of Atlanta is booked. And the hotel, and so the demand is expanding. We believe we're ahead of the demand. We think we're going to build a quality brand that's going to be exemplary of the area. We're excited about it. I know when we met with the ward representatives early on, there was a question about what the quality was going to be, and we hadn't determined that. We've now got a market study that, we've made that available to you all. We believe right now that the market supports $104 a night room hotels, and we think it's only going to go up. But we're building a brand, and Ms. DeMello's going to talk to you about the potential brands that support that price point. But we're excited about it, and we've gone around and looked at all the hotels since we met with the ward representatives, and there's not, it doesn't appear that the brands that we're concerned about are going to be supported in this area. There's nobody's doing, I don't believe, extended stay or anything like that in the immediate area. The, so we're excited about it. We think that the way that we're going to design this is going to optimize the site. It's going to be good for the city, and we're excited about it. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. DeMello. She's going to tell you a little bit more about the hotel, and then we will be available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. DeMello.
My name is Cavita Rohit. I'm from One Glen Lake Parkway in Atlanta, Georgia. The code is 30328. Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Mayor and the committee, and it's good to see again, Councilwoman Adams and Councilwoman Miller. I would just like to mention a few things about the hotel that we do know right now, that we will definitely be able to build a hotel that will support a $104 ADR, average daily rate. So that's kind of something that we know we will be able to do, and it will be a hotel that will be an interior corridor, so there will be no, nobody that can just park their car and get inside the hotel room. They would have to go through a lobby. There would be a key card access only, you know, for patrons. So, and a couple of other things that we have determined is that we will not have a pool. We will not have any barbecue area or picnicking area or anything like that. It will be a mid-scale property, as based on the STAR report that has been submitted. There will be 24/7 staff on the property, and we will not really be looking to connect rooms and, you know, bring in large groups of people. This will be more or less, more like a corporate-type hotel where, you know, individual rooms will be maintained, and there wouldn't be large group of people, you know, that we would patronize. The property will be built with safety in mind, and will be maintained well and kept clean, and will be very comfortable. I mean, you know, that's, so at this time, the brands that we're looking at is Ascend, which is a Choice brand, and a Best Western Plus. The third brand that we're also considering is a Clarion Point. So we haven't, you know, been able to obviously finalize the brand, but one way or the other, we will be spending in the neighborhood of $10 million for this project. So that's just what, you know, but I can take any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeMello. I appreciate that. Are there others that would speak concerning? Do you have anyone else in your party that would speak concerning the item in favor of it? This being a public hearing, we need to give opportunity for anyone to speak about it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Not from our team, no.
Okay. Do we have questions of council? I saw Mr. Mayor Pro Tem's hand go up first, so I'll yield to you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you having any, are you intending to build any conference facilities or meeting facilities in this hotel?
Yes. In the secondary building, that's where we would put in some conferences.
Not in the hotel itself?
Not at this point, is not the plan.
And the exercise facilities or anything like that? Is it going to be like full service in that regard? You have, would there be a new restaurant on site or anything like that?
Not in the hotel itself, no.
Okay.
Because all the brands that we've looked at really don't support a hotel, I mean, a restaurant in the hotel.
And how many rooms did you say?
Approximately 84 rooms.
Thank you.
That's kind of the street spot.
Other questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming in, presenting. We appreciate it. We're excited about the opportunity, and I just had a couple of questions. I know you mentioned some of the flags that you were seeking at that average daily rate for $104, so Choice, Best Western, and Clarion, did you say?
Clarion Point.
Okay. Clarion Point. Some of my concerns were just traffic. I'm not certain about. I drove by the, coming in and out, I don't know how conducive that would be, and I wanted staff, that parking, is that, did they meet all the requirements for parking and traffic? Do we have to do a curb cut?
Yes, ma'am. They met the parking requirements.
Okay. Do we have to do a curb cut or a light or anything?
They have, I think the applicant stated in an earlier meeting with us that they have an option to have ingress and egress to come off Earl D. Lee Boulevard.
Okay.
So they have an easement.
And that we'll be able to? They'll be able to that? And also, so it is within the UDO, and it is not a motel type? You did mention that, that you'd have to have a key card to get in from the inside, and you would not be able to access the outside, and it is not extended stay?
Correct. It's an interior corridor. So it will be, yeah, it'll be accessible only through a front lobby.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Coach Watts, go ahead.
The 8,400-square-foot building is, so is that going to be like an event space? Like someone could rent it to have an event there?
That is a possibility, yes. So we would have some, like, she said, we would have some place where we would host corporate meetings and some kind of event space.
Okay.
And a restaurant. So definitely a restaurant. I think we've pretty much decided that definitely there will be a restaurant there.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Ms. DeMello, so basically then, your accessory building, your 8,400-square-foot building, would be used for something connected to the hotel. It will not be retail space. It would be for lease. It would be used within that organization, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's been question about the access. If I'm not mistaken, is there not deeded access between the Pizza Hut and the Dunkin' Donuts coming off of State Highway 92 to that property?
There is. Actually, the pathway between the two is owned by this property.
Okay. So that, so there is frontage on Fairburn Highway 92 for access. Entrance and exit, I would assume, right in, right out only because of the median?
Correct.
So the secondary entrance would then potentially be on Earl D. Lee Boulevard via, what you're saying is an easement?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Councilwoman Miller, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify, your hotel, would that be an extended stay hotel?
That's not the plan, no.
It is? I'm sorry? Because, are you looking to lease it out, or would you guys manage that property?
No, we will manage that property as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would speak in opposition to this application? If so, I'd like to give opportunity for those persons to come forward. Okay. We will close that portion of the public hearing, and if there are no other questions that council may have of the applicant, then we will move on then to the next item. We'll take that up on Monday for a vote. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Item B, hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to PRD, Planned Residential District, for 53.846 acres at Lee Road in Land Lot 719, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 5. Application by Parks P. Huff. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. The applicant narrative states that the purpose of this request is to develop a 300-unit multifamily development consisting of 10 buildings, including a clubhouse. The proposed development will have 451 parking spaces. buildings, including a clubhouse. The proposed development will have 451 parking spaces. That's 224 less than the UDO requires. The applicant will be required to apply for an administrative alternative parking plan to meet the mandated parking requirements. The project will be comprised of 60% of one bedrooms for a total of 180 units. 30% of the units will be two bedrooms for a total of 90 units. And 10% of the units will be three bedrooms and they will be, and that will make up 30, 30 units. One bedroom units will make up the bulk of the apartments. The property is located on the west side of Lee Road, just south of Interstate 20 and just north of the villas at West Ridge Apartment Complex. The site is, is appropriate for an apartment complex due to its location at an interstate exchange providing quick and convenient access to jobs, shopping and recreation. The surrounding zone includes to the north and city PRD. East is in the county. It's LI and CG. South is city, which is PUD, and west is city, PUD. The proposed development is consistent with the purpose and intent of the UDO. The city's UDO states that the intent of the PRD zoning designated, designation is to provide and promote a suitable environment for family life and to encourage flexibility, flexibility and meeting the needs of families by providing high-density apartment dwellings with a minimum two, minimum of a two-acre site. This proposed amendment meets that goal. The proposed project furthers the intent of the comprehensive plan. The subject property is located within a high-density residential character area. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Future land use designation for high-density residential. PRD is a recommended land use for the high-density character area. The maximum recommended density for the high-density character area is six units per acre. And the applicant, applicant's proposal fall within those guidelines by providing a density rate of 5.56 units per acre. On June 1st, the planning commission recommended approval unanimously. Finally, the proposed rezoning from PUD to PRD meets the standards prescribed by the city's UDO and is consistent with the city's comp plan and land use map. As a result, staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Is the, is there a representative of the applicant here, please?
Yes.
If you would, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record and we would be ready to hear your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. Glad to be here. My name is Connor McNally at 999 Peachtree Street in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm a principal and owner of Shelton McNally Real Estate Partners and we are the developer of the project. We have some materials here. So I'll just make a few brief comments and then take any questions, but please stop me at any time if you do have any questions. So again, the property is located at the Lee Road intersection just south of Interstate 20. The property is approximately 53 acres bounded by Interstate 20. The villas at, at West Ridge Apartment Complex to the south and Lee Road to the east. The, the property itself is, is a little bit of a challenge or quite a bit of a challenge to develop. In total, it's 53 acres, but really only about 30 acres are developable. In order to get into any developable part of the property, we have a fairly long entry drive that comes off Lee Road. We have to get past wetlands. There's a couple of jurisdictional streams that have very large buffers that we're staying out of. We're not looking for any variances or, or anything out of the ordinary with respect to that. But we have to move west in the property and get over a significant amount of grade change and a Georgia power and a gas easement that run between the apartment property to the south and this property. Zooming in a little bit on the site plan, this shows you the, the configuration, which is a 5,600 square foot amenity and club building that has a, a pool and all of the typical amenities that we would have that I'll detail a little later. And then 10 residential buildings, each of them three stories with 30 apartment units in total and all of the associated parking and amenities. There are some garages. There will be, because the property itself is wooded and fairly large, we're going to look at building a recreational trail around the perimeter for the residents to be able to walk. So just some quick highlights. Again, this is a market rate apartment community bounded by Interstate 20. So we've got very, we feel it's a very appropriate location. As staff pointed out in their SAF report, it's right at the intersection with Interstate 20. So from a traffic and a convenience perspective, most of our tenants would be commuters and would be accessing Interstate 20. We're also less than a five-minute drive to the Public's anchored grocery center at Highway 92. So if you go down Lee Road, that's a very short drive. We have worked through traffic, the, the plan for entry and exit to the community fairly extensively. Our engineers have been working with County DOT and we have a plan both for the current condition of Lee Road and there are plans for some future widening and, and work on Lee Road. And so our engineers have coordinated with DOT to have a plan for both now, before that work happens, because there isn't a definitive timeline. And then once that work does happen, there's a, a, a future plan as to how the, the access in and out of the community would work. In total, like I said, we have 300 units. It is predominantly one-bedroom units, so 60% are, 180 units are one-bedrooms. 90 of the units are two-bedrooms and 30 are three. I included some information on development, the, the total property size and density. And at a request in some of the previous meetings in the planning commission, we just wanted to quote this acreage, the net developable or usable acreage is actually only 30 acres. So our overall density is 5.6 units per acre on the property, which is consistent with the, with the limits for the PRD zoning designation. Our projected rent range falls anywhere between 1225 on the low end for one of the smaller one-bedrooms, up to about 1750 for a three-bedroom. And the typical amenities that we include would be a, a pool at the amenity, at the, the club and amenity building, a clubroom, a full fitness center in that clubroom, walking trails around the property, dog park, and then a valet trash service. So we have a dumpster located along the drive getting back out to the front that will be screened. And then we provide valet trash service. So we, we go around and actually collect all of the trash from everybody's door and bring it to that compactor so that we can make sure that we maintain the, the property looking clean and looking attractive. And then included in the packet were, were just some sample imagery and renderings. This is a, a rendering of what the typical multifamily building would look like. This is a photograph from inside the unit. This is from another development that we have completed. More pictures inside. This is a rendering of what the club and amenity building look like. And then the clubroom itself, this again is a photograph from a, a similar project that we've just completed. This is also the fitness center from that same project. And then some sample images of what the exterior amenities would look like. And the top left corner here is a building that's built by the same contractor and very similar to what our club and amenity building will look like with the associated pool. I'm going to go back here to the site plan. One other thing I neglected to point out, at the very corner of, at Lee Road and Interstate 20, there is another parcel that is actually not in the city. It was a former gas station that got demolished. And when DOT did some of the work at the interchange, there was also a waffle house just to the south of that property. That waffle house and this property were taken by the DOT. The old gas station at the corner is fairly unsightly right now. It just got sort of demoed and it's kind of rubble and, and left alone. We found out that there was a, some sort of tax lien purchase on that property and we are now actually under contract to purchase that property ourselves. It's landlocked. It doesn't have a, it doesn't have a curb cut and DOT owns the property to the south. And then there's a county lift station. So there's, there's no real feasible way to develop the property, but we wanted to clean up the intersection. So we're under contract to purchase that and basically landscape it and make it more attractive, make it something that, that's, you know, a little bit nicer looking as you get off the interstate. So that's the general summary. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. I see that our, Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. Miller has a question for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I, I will clarify that what I'm going to say is strictly my opinion. It does not necessarily represent City Council with respect to our chair. However, I do hope that there are members, other members of council that will agree with me. Very, very disappointing design overall. Starting with the site plan, we get a lot of complaints from folks around the city about apartment development in this community. And this is the reason. It, it's a bunch of boxes scattered around parking lots. And I'm sorry to be so rough on, but it, and I understand that you have site issues you're trying to deal with and you have challenges, which always leads me to, when I discuss, as an architect, when I discuss with clients, I say sometimes maybe what you want to build on the property is not what should be, should be built on there. That might be something to think about. If you're having, having to shoehorn things in or if you're having these grades of challenge, grade of a challenge, maybe that's just not the right development for that property. There, there really is no life to this, the design, this layout. It's, like I said, it's a bunch of boxes. You're throwing them around a parking lot. There's no relationship between, between the buildings. They don't seem to, to create any, any sense of community in there. It's a dead-end development. The building itself, the design is very bland and it has no life as well. I don't know that you'd be able to get the price point you're asking for because I really don't see any architectural manifestation, any architectural interest that's created in, in this design. Like I said, I'm going to be harsh because we're trying to raise the bar in this community. We want better development. And if, and if we, if we're getting designs that don't really fit, don't meet that criteria, it, it really brings down a lot of other things. And we, my point is that, you know, I want to see the best design possible. And if it, that looks like there's not much of an effort put in, I'm going to point it out. And I don't see much of an effort put into the design of this. Now, maybe it's just a first blush. I understand that. You know, you have stages of development and you're going to come back hopefully maybe with something a little more interesting and a little better designed. But at the moment, this is very disappointing, I'm sorry to say.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions. The, the mindset behind the 202 parking spaces that were decreased from the requirement from staff, Mr. Anderson?
They will have to apply for alternative parking plan variance. They will have to submit supporting documentation from other properties that they own indicating that there's not a need to have the, the total maximum number of parking spaces. We've done that with a number of apartment developments in the city. So 451 might not seem like a lot, but it's, I think it's sufficient for the development.
Okay.
Because the, the bulk of the units that they have are one-bedroom units. So.
Okay. So that, that answers that question. And you said the price point was 125, 1,225 to two-something or whatever a month? 117?
That's right. Up to 1750 per month. So the average across all of the units would come out to be right, right around $1,400 a month, just under $1,400 a month.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to ask of many moons ago, when I was a single professional leaving college and moved to Maryland, was it, there were really nice apartments like these. And we have heard in our housing study earlier today that we needed to have more multifamily in apartments for people that are moving into the area. But it was a gated community and that really helped me to feel secure and my father to feel more comfortable with me leaving five hours away to start my career. So is it a gated community? I did see gates around the pool, but I'm not certain if they're in, in that.
Yes, this will be gated. There will be gates along that access drive coming in so that you would need to be a resident or a guest to be able to get buzzed into the community. But it would be gated.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions council may have? Yes, Coach Watts? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. You, you said that y'all are going to do like a multipurpose or, or trail around the property?
That's right. A walking trail.
A walking trail.
Once we've completed the development, we'll be able to go in and basically put a mulch trail that the tenants would be able to walk or run around.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. And dog park, you said also would be one of the amenities?
Yeah, that's a, that's a must in these communities these days. There's, we tend to do a fairly large dog park and we do an amenity within that where people can come and congregate as the dogs play, folks hang out.
Okay. And, and you did say it was market rate?
Market rate.
Okay. And where is a, another apartment development that y'all have done that's nearby that if, that we could look at if we had the time?
So a very similar one, unfortunately, it's not nearby, but very similar to, to this project, similar architect, same architect and same contractor. It's just finished in Greenville, South Carolina.
Okay.
We've developed another under the same Novo brand in Avondale Estates in DeGav County. That was a renovation of an older complex. So architecturally, we sort of had to just renovate what we were dealt with. But the amenities, the size, the scale, the bedroom mix was very similar in that. I, we've, myself and my partner have been doing this for combined 50 years. We started a new firm three years ago. So we've been ramping up. We just don't, because we're three and a half years old, we don't have a lot of properties that have delivered.
I see. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Other questions? Mr. McNally, I had, I wanted to go back for just a moment. A part of your presentation, two things stood out to me. You mentioned something about refuse collection within the community that you would have owners of the property actually do that and then take that to the dumpsters. And then the dumpsters would be picked up, of course, by a private firm. We've had some issues in a couple of our properties around the city, multifamily properties concerning that. Explain to me again how you would go about that now.
So, yeah, we engage a, a third-party firm. This has become quite common in, in the apartment world at, you know, a reasonable price point and above. You can't do this at every price point. But we, that service comes in, they have maintenance staff who basically on a daily basis will go around and pick up your trash. The tenants literally put the trash in a bag outside their door. And multiple times a day, we have staff go through, pick those up, collect them across the community and bring them to the dumpster. What we have found over time is that even at reasonably high price points, unfortunately, people are lazy. And they, they either will leave trash around, they'll fling it into the compactor and miss. And it just, it creates a problem and it creates a nuisance and, and just unsightly garbage around the community. So we want to control that. We charge the tenants for that. It's typically a nominal. It's something like 10 bucks a month, but it's, it's not a choice. You, you, if you want to take your garbage over to the, to the compactor, you're welcome to do that. But everybody takes advantage of this and it, it helps. It's a convenient, low-cost convenient thing for the tenants that they like. And it also helps us keep the community clean.
Okay. Second point, you, you mentioned some of the challenges of the property. I did hear, and I remember you speaking when we met with you with staff a few days ago. You do have state waters or a creek that runs through the property. You're also challenged by what other utilities?
So there's, there's wetlands, a creek, and then there is a utility easement, a power and gas easement. There are power lines, high tension power lines that run through, sort of splitting the two apartment complexes. And so we have to get past that. Obviously, we can't develop anything in that or around that easement area.
So this, so the reason for your development plan or for your layout of the buildings is so that you can take advantage of usable property outside of buffers in two different locations in order to get that type of, or that much yield on the property?
Yes, sir. Yes. We have to, we have to get over a significant amount of elevation change, go over the gas and, and utility easement through the wetlands, over the creek crossing. And that's when we ultimately get back into the developable part of the property.
And the developable part of the property, it would appear from the overhead shots that you have given us, actually is going to be seen mainly from I-20 the way it appears. What about the property between Lee Road and the development site that you have on page 82 of our presentation with a long, yellow, proposed driveway? What about the property on the exit ramp between Lee Road and your development site? Is all of that property going to stay green space?
Yes, it is. We're not touching any of that.
Okay. So that, that is what is, okay. And then the corner from the overhead shot that we see, the corner where the old convenience store and gas pumps was, that will become a landscape monument, whatever, to your development?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions of council? If not, are there anyone else here that would speak? This being a public hearing, we need to give opportunity. Is there anyone here that would speak for or against the development? Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. McNally. We may call you back in a moment. Give opportunity for everyone else to speak.
My name is Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way, Douglasville. I have a question about what the buildings are going to look like. Are they going to be brick? Are they going to be wood that needs to be painted and then they don't get painted? So they'll look like, you know, and I guess that's the main thing, apartments. If the people who own them don't come out and look at them all the time, they're not going to realize that maintenance needs to be done.
Ms. Welch, I-
And then pretty soon.
I understand. I think it, what we're looking at at this moment is an application for rezoning. We're not looking at the development plan as of yet, which of course, if approved, then the, the developer would have to come in under our development plan and, and pass staff's muster as far as the materials.
Even under zoning, you could put conditions that they have to be brick or that, you know.
Yes, ma'am. I totally agree.
So I was just wondering if they could tell you what they're going to do.
I'll be happy for the applicant to respond to that. Anyone else here that would speak concerning the item either for or against? Please come forward. Okay. Mr. McNally, we'll give you opportunity to respond and close this out.
Thank you. As it relates to the architecture and design of the building, a couple of things I would point out. One, as it relates to the layout, you'd point out, Mr. Adams, that where most of the apartments are visible from I-20. What we have tried to do with the layout is to orient the buildings in such a way that only the ends of the building face Interstate 20. So most of the views from the apartments would be along the east-west axis. We've also tried to group them together so that there are areas in between buildings that can be small amenity areas. And we typically will go in and put fire pits or grills or, you know, Adirondack chairs or, you know, cornhole or something out there to sort of create that sense of community. The, the buildings themselves, the exterior facade is cementitious siding. So yes, it is painted. But I would point out to you that this is, you know, in today's world, I understand that when folks look and think about an apartment community, what most often comes to mind is something that is probably older, hasn't been well looked after, maybe subsidized housing. And, and you can get things that don't look very good. And over time, they can be neglected and they become an eyesore. That is not the case in institutional apartment complexes like this. The apartment world has changed pretty dramatically over the past 25 years. You are probably seeing in your community, a lot of older communities that are being purchased and heavily renovated. There's limited supply of these properties. It's very difficult to develop them at a price point that you can actually lease at affordable rates. And so what's happening is there's a lot of institutional money. These are owned, they're, they're developed and owned, owned institutionally. People pay a lot of money for them. And when you have institutional ownership like that, capital reserves and upkeep are paramount. A pension fund is the type of, you know, buyer that would, that would ultimately buy stabilized property. They have an absolute- They have an absolute adherence to making sure they don't lose capital, and the only way that they can do that is to make sure they can maintain rents and invest in their properties. So, I, I understand that everyone can probably point to examples of apartment communities that have been let, you know, go bad. That is not the case, it is not the case in a development like this where it's gonna cost this much money, and we're developing it for the long term.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other question or comment? I will close the portion of the public hearing, then as far as questions, stat, uh, Madam Mayor or Council, any other question?
No, sir.
Okay. Not, then we will take this up on Monday, and we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to Item C. Consider Request for Development Plan Approval for Caliber Car Wash for 1.92 acres at Highway Five and Concourse Road in Land Lot 159, District Two, Section Five, Parcel Thirty-One, for Plan Date in May twenty-first, two thousand twenty, Application by Civil Logistics LLC. Ms. Maya Jackson, you're gonna help us with that.
Maya Jackson, six seven zero one Church Street. The item before you is a development plan for a car wash proposed at Highway Five and Concourse Road. You all have heard this item before, and it was approved back in January of two thousand twenty-one. You're seeing it again because they have made some changes to their site plan, so I've provided you with the previous site plan that was approved and the proposed changes. Included in those changes, the exit on Highway Five, which was previously an entrance and an exit, it will now be exit-only, and there will only be an entrance on Concourse Road. They've also moved the line or the queue to the south of the site, and it will have room for fourteen cars to stack there, and they've also put the car wash tunnel in the middle of the site and added some detention ponds, as well as a sidewalk all the way down Concourse Road. The elevations, for the most part, are the same, and the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. She looked at me when, when she said the word queue because I had to ask what that meant. I wasn't sure what the queue was.
It's a queue.
Ms. Jackson?
It's the English word for a line, a queue.
That's where you sit in line to wait to go into the car wash? That's the queue.
Oh, yeah, when you queue somebody up.
You queue.
I thought it was queue like omega, you know.
Oh, no. A queue like a line, like we're in queue.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, if you will look on page six of six in our packet, you will see the way the development plan has been changed, and as Ms. Jackson has said, that's the reason that they had to come in because we have already approved this, but there are changes that are required. I'm assuming some of that would be detention, but the change that really stuck out to me was the fact that they are coming with an entrance and exit on concourse with an exit only on to Highway Five. There is no entrance on Highway Five, and therefore, they've had to change the configuration, the location on the property of the building, the parking, and the queue. Questions, comments? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Sidebar, from this particular applicant, and application is, we've already reviewed it and approved it, as you've said, in January, and now we just have these changes, so they need to come back before us. I don't know if we could do a study on car washes in the city, not have a moratorium, but just a study to see how many we had as we continue to develop and especially Highway ninety-two realignment, just for businesses to come in. Not certain if we have a plethora of car washes in, in the city. Seemingly, we have a lot of car washes. Can we do that, Ms. Woodward, or? I don't want to squelch any business, I'm just asking a question.
The planning, the, the Community Development Department, they have a very good GIS system that we could definitely find out how many car washes and where they're located at, and we'll also, legal will look into other cities and see what they have done for car washes and tire stores.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna beat my head on the desk on this one, because I think I might have said the same thing when this was first presented, and again, it's about design and just very, being very disappointed about the, the character of this. I mean, you know, I am gonna beat my head on the desk. You know, we can do anything we want with these buildings, and they occupy them, but when it's all said and done, we're left with a building. Yeah? I mean, the design is so important, and, and you can't say that it's, well, it's just a car wash, what can you do with it? There's actually some nice-looking car washes out there. In this city, we've had a few themed car washes that are kind of, are quite presentable, and we keep getting presented with, you know, boxes that don't have much attractive or street appeal to it, and it's just, you know, anyway.
Some people like shaker. Shaker designer.
I wish this were shaker, that would be something interesting, actually. That's a whole other connotation, but I'll shut up for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
No problem. So, in retrospect, then, again, this development plan meets the criteria as far as materials?
Yes, sir.
As far as space, as far as parking, as far as our UDO is concerned, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any question or any input from anyone else? We want to move along if there's not. Okay, we'll take this up on Monday for a vote. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. We'll go to Item D. Reappoint Mr. Nathan Zachary, Ward One, to the City of Douglasville's Planning Commission to serve a five-year term expiring June one, two thousand twenty-six. Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Chelsea Jackson, six six nine five Church Street. As you all know, back in October, you all appointed seven individuals to serve on the planning commission. They were staggered terms to ensure that the expiration dates did not expire at the same time. Mr. Nathan Zachary was appointed, and his term ended on June first, two thousand twenty-one. Staff recommends that he is reappointed. He has been attending the meetings, and he would like to be reappointed as well.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and read E and F, and then I'll just make one recommendation. Reappoint Mr. Keith Burnett, Ward Five, to the City of Douglasville's Planning Commission to serve a five-year term expiring June one, two thousand twenty-six. Same situation?
Yes, sir.
And then appoint Mr. John Dean to the Douglasville Historic Preservation Commission to fill an unexpired term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything to add to that item that we have, we've heard Mr. Dean's had his interview this evening? Is there any, anything that you need to add to that?
Nothing else to add, sir.
Questions, comments of council concerning any item D, E, or F? Yes, Madam Mayor Protem?
These are all the only nominees for those positions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all.
So, we have reappointments of Mr. Zachary and Mr. Keith Burnett, and obviously, as you've mentioned, you've asked them, and they do want to be reappointed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the new appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, we had a, an interview with them tonight, so are there any, any other question or comment there? Uh, the reappointments, I would like, if possible, D and E to be placed on the consent agenda, or is it required that we have a vote on that? I will not ask that F be placed on it so that we can have a vote, but that being the only person that we have that has applied that it would want to be at this time appointed, I'll leave that off. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have under planning and development tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll move on to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business tonight.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am, I have one item.
Uh-huh.
And to reappoint Ms. Tamara Manning to the Douglas County Animal Control Advisory Board to serve a two-year term expiring July third, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Chelsea Jackson, six six nine five Church Street. I would like to say there is a typo. Her term should be, should expire July third, two thousand twenty-three, but Ms. Tamara Manning, she's currently serving on the Douglas County Animal Control Advisory Board, and she would like to be reappointed.
Yes, Tamara and I, we met, and she loving every minute of it, and thank you, I want to be a proud, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with John Pearson to provide security services for the park properties owned by the city. Mr. Landrum will cover this.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Travis Landrum, eight eight three zero Gurley Road. We're seeking approval for the attached document to go into an agreement with security services and John Pearson. As discussed on May seventeenth, the attached agreement reflects the conversation and verbiage discussed during that meeting with services being provided for three days a week. Verbiage also was included regarding background checks in Item Six B under covenants and agreements. This item was drafted by legal and shared with the service provider with no questions or concerns, so at this time, I'll field any questions or concerns that you might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Landrum. And we discussed this two rounds ago?
May seventeenth, yes.
Okay, so, and this is just to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Do we have any questions or comments? Madam Mayor, you want to start?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Landrum, for, for coming forward and presenting this application, I'm not application, but this contract to us for security services at our parks. I did have some concerns from council members about the other days of the week. Is staff prepared, or do we, I mean, we're starting to come back out and people going to the parks, do they know to call the police department, or do we have some, someone that's really kind of looking over those parks until the weekend comes when it's more populated?
Yes, ma'am. Staff will be prepared to contact the emergency services if needed, and we also have drafted a schedule for management staff to be available that will work throughout the week as well to help if there's any concerns or situations going on in our parks.
Okay. That sounds good. It gives me a little more comfort. I know that there are some still practices for softball and, with all the other football and soccer and stuff during, not just on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but, you know, throughout the week, so.
Correct.
As long as we have someone that's kind of patrolling, and I know Police Department Chief Sparks has said that it's part of the rotation as well to go by the parks with the police officers and their rounds and their zones, but I know that I did get some concerns from council members about the days that Mr. Pearson was not going to, and his staff were gonna be actually at the parks, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Landrum. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else on the council have any questions for Mr. Landrum? Okay. All right, Mr. Landrum, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Would it be okay with the mayor and council to place this on the consent agenda for Monday?
Looks like it's good.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Coach. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Landrum. The next committee is Technology Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item under the Technology Committee at this time, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with T-Mobile South LLC for use of the city's downtown communications tower. It's Karen Knight.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Good evening.
Hope you're well this evening.
Karen Knight, Communications Coordinator with the Douglasville Police Department, twenty-eighty-three Fairburn Road, Douglasville. We have this one item with T-Mobile. They've been on our tower now for, good lord, twenty-five years now, one of the original besties of the tower site. They have come back now to renew that agreement and to continue on for another, basically, twenty-five-year term. Their rate will still be, will start out at twenty-three hundred dollars, which is what it is now, and then continue on over the timeframe. We have put in a rate chart for them as well.
Okay. We have any questions or comments from Madam Mayor?
I had a quick comment. I just went, hey, Karen, hello.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
This is our professionals, good to see you. We've been missing faces since COVID. It's nice to see you.
I've been around.
Okay. It's passing in the night, ship's passing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Any, any other questions or comments from a member of the council? I think this, you know, you pointed out, this is a pretty standard lease agreement. We've done this thing, not just with T-Mobile, but a lot of other companies on other tower leases, so there's nothing out of the ordinary that I've spotted or didn't think anybody else has, and you said that's an accelerating agreement, so there's an, was there another acceleration to the, it allows for inflation over time?
Yes.
On the, on the price?
Yes.
Okay. Unless there are any objections? Please.
I have a question. The tower that's down by Riverside Parkway, sometimes you can't get reception there. Are our police officers able to get reception in the area yet consistently?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Once we added, once Douglas County came on board as well, and we added the additional tower sites for the, for the radio system, yes, the, the coverage has improved.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? If there are no objections, I like to place this item on the consent agenda for Monday. We will so do that. Thank you, Ms. Knight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Madam, Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you, Ms. Knight. We'll move on then to Item Sixteen, which is Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first, we have three items. The first is adopt a resolution to name new streets created by State Route Ninety-two Project and to rename certain streets. Ms. Attorney Woodward?
Thank you, Chairwoman Burdanley. This resolution that you should have a draft of it in, in your agenda packet, the streets in question are two new, newly formed streets essentially that, that are gonna be Caldwell Court and Mill Village Connector, and there are two streets that are gonna be renamed. A portion of Brown Street will be renamed as James Vance Street, and a portion of Malone Street, that is right next to Jesse Davis Park, will be renamed Jesse Davis Park Drive. And you will see in the exhibits neat pictures that depict the streets that are going to be renamed. If you have any questions, I, I would be happy to answer it.
I don't have a question. I, I do have a comment. I received a phone call from one of the residents who live off of Davis Drive. The cul-de-sac, Caldwell cul-de-sac, can we get a sign that says turn around?
Once we, if, once you all deal with the streets that have to be named, we'll make certain that we have all of the signage and the lighting. The next few items will deal with the lighting that we have to deal with as well. You all will also be able to, we'll show you on the tour on Monday specifically exactly where these streets are prior to your vote, but we can make certain to have all of those placards up.
Thank you. I think residents were just driving then and didn't know, so that'll be great. Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Thank you, Ms. Woodward. I, I do not want to put this, that one on the consent agenda. I think that there will be family members here from the different families that are named to, so that they can be here and hear that. Are there any questions or comments in regards to Item A?
Madam Chair, yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm impressed with the choices. I like the choices. I think it's great.
I hope that the families that are involved are satisfied with that, and I'm looking forward to the actual ride on Monday just to see exactly what portions of those streets are going to be renamed as we come to the closing portion of our development or of the state's development of this project. Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
Assuming that the names are approved by vote next week, will we have some sort of ceremony to, ribbon cutting or something like that on the streets?
There is a plan that as we get toward the end of the project, there is a ceremony for their entire route, but if you all want to do individual ceremonies for individual streets, we can be...
Seems like that would be appropriate, especially, you know...
For individual streets?
Yeah, to recognize the individual who are being, for which these streets are being named for. I think that would seem appropriate.
It would, to me, it would be just appropriate to do it when the, when the route, because it is a part of the route as well, and just have one, so we wouldn't have to.
Well, I was thinking it'd be more of an honor to the folks who are going to have a ceremony dedicated to that particular person for whom the street's being named.
Can we talk about, can we talk about that a little more?
Whichever you all want to do. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, because I know, I was just talking to Councilman Davis, that Mr. Steele's family has not been contacted anymore, so I think it is appropriate that we do contact them in regards to it. But as far as the ceremony, we can talk about that a little bit later, probably on our ride on Monday.
Yes, ma'am. And just keeping in mind, as Ms. Woodward mentioned, these are two streets that did not have names, and they're new streets as a result of the route. These are other two streets that purged as safety and for public safety issues, we're changing the names so there's no conflicting information for emergency and public safety personnel. They're the other items to deal with, that there was not a consensus, but we're just dealing with these where we know that there is a consensus, and we'll take up the other items later on.
So, Ms. Hampton, the other items that you're speaking of, are you speaking in regards to Mr. Steele, the 92?
Mr. Steele, New Horizons Boulevard, and so some of the others that came, that were actual renames.
Right.
So, for instance, Highway 92 doesn't need a name, but you all have, you know, wanted to either do a dedication or renaming, so because we didn't have clarity on that, we just felt like this was most important to deal with.
And I wanted to also add that, speaking with our representative, State Representative Kimberly Alexander stated that when the re, it's not really the renaming of Highway 92, but if it's going to be honored, Mr. Steele to be honored, it'll just be a plaque, I mean, like a sign, so it'll still be the name, but you'll just have a sign, and I think that's appropriate, so you don't have to do all the rest.
And what about, Madam Chair, what about the Malone Street, Douglasville?
I think what Ms. Hampton just mentioned is the New Horizons Boulevard and all the other names, we'll be discussing those at another date. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and I would recommend that while we're on the route on Monday, you all take a look at that. I do have an item at 5:00 that's the recap from the route, so maybe we can further the discussion when you all are ready to move forward to deal with the names or the dedications, whichever you choose to do, but we do have a 5:00 agenda item for a recap of the ride along.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I did have a comment as well. Thank you so much for getting down and getting, really getting all the spaghetti streets, extrapolating all the streets and getting the names together. I appreciate your leadership in that.
Yes, ma'am.
But I do think we have consensus for Highway 92 to be Mr. Steele. I don't know if there's any objections to that, but if that's one of the streets, then we can put that on the docket to hand over to staff, but I'll let Madam Chair have a conversation with the city manager.
The question was whether it's going to be, I know we talked about dedication or street naming, so that was where the, so if we're comfortable with dedication...
A placard.
Yeah, a placard. Yeah, and that's what Representative Alexander stated. I think that's appropriate from what we've seen throughout the city and county consistently.
Yeah, that's something easy. That's a resolution. I'll give Ms. Woodward, she can draft up and possibly even on Monday, just to have it dedicated.
Sure.
And that's something we can do. We don't possibly even have to involve the Georgia Department of Transportation with the exception of where to put it in the right of way.
Oh, that's great. All right, and most definitely, whenever we get ready to do that, I know Monday is kind of late notice, just to make sure that we have the family here to do that. All right, no other items, no other questions or comments for number one. The second is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Georgia Power Company to provide electricity to the lights at the intersection of Malone Street and Highway 92. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening. Mayor and Council Greg Roberts, Public Services Department, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville. This is for the addition of four overhead streetlights. It is at a upfront cost of $19,875. We would pay that out of our remaining splosh transportation funds, and the cost is for underground, so everything in that area now is underground right in there, and so that would keep cables from being in the air, so it's a good bit of underground work, and it adds four lights for now. We could potentially come back and add some later. There is a little drawing detail that Brandon with G-Dot provided to us. It shows two at the new intersection of Malone Road and Davis Drive at the old Dallas Highway, which is one of the sections of road that we'll probably be dealing with soon, and you see those two marked in yellow. You see one on the corner of Davis Drive at Caldwell Court, and so that is a good area light that would light that intersection up. That one's in yellow, and then there's one that's, he's marked in black, and that is the 180 LED light. The other three are two 10s, and so that's for those four lights.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. It's so nice to hear that. Any comments or questions about that item?
Madam Chair, yes, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that I think now that the DOT has opened the road and has given us then the potential opportunity then to go forward with lighting of those areas that aren't going to be our responsibility. I appreciate the expediency that you've gone to, Mr. Roberts, to get that done, because I know that was a concern of many of the residents, and we just have a certain order of the way things have to be done before we can do that, and I appreciate you getting on that right away.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and yes, actually, I do appreciate Mr. Roberts and Ms. Hampton and everyone else who worked diligently in contacting the Commissioner of Transportation, because unfortunately, the lights, some of the lights that were added were not even in the plan, so I just want to say thank you for diligently working so hard to get it done. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, the last one is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Georgia Power Company to provide electricity to the area light near, you just mentioned that, 6720 Davis Drive?
Yes, so, and this is really just authorizing to add a light for a monthly fee of 3623. So, there was another item that was going to be on here tonight, and so we ran into a little bit of a roadblock, no pun intended. If you recall, a few years ago, we had the lighting, the sidewalk lighting project that went all the way up to the project limits of the 92 project, and we had to stop short of installing about 12 lights down there with a company called Exel Air. And so we were in the process of trying to get those done, but in, with, working with Mr. Hernandez with Exel Air, I think we're going to have to redo the contract from back then, but we've still got to look at that and hopefully get some clarification. So, we would be installing about 27 more lights, I believe it is. I could be wrong about that. That sounds right. It's the 12 that they had, and then we added eight, and then we were going to add eight more after I got with them, and that was to light up that entire sidewalk along the Davis Drive corridor, put some in the Caldwell Court, and in the process of this, I realized it would leave a sort of a dead spot between the end of those sidewalk lights and the next light down into Davis Drive where the road gets real narrow, and this light will light up that dead spot, as I'll call it. There's a pole there, so it's perfect. So, we'll go ahead and get that installed while we try to work on the sidewalks and get that contract. So, hopefully, if not next round, definitely in July, we will get that contract process, hopefully, worked out and get it to you.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, Madam Mayor, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Roberts. Do we have any other business to come forth, council, tonight? I just wanted to quickly say a couple of things. I hope I didn't overlook anyone, but to thank staff and Mr. Roberts for, again, Highway 92 and the realignment project and a lot of those issues that we brought up last week with the community that were addressed. I know we do have a War III community meeting on the 30th here at the conference center. Is it 6:00 PM? Madam Chair, yeah, okay. And then we'll talk about MacCarley Street, pedestrian disability poles, just the whole gamut of everything, and I do have another conversation scheduled with Commissioner McMurray on Monday at 2:00. So, I'll talk with him again and tell him how things are progressing along and what issues we still have concerned before the 30th, the meeting on the 30th. I want to thank Mr. Roberts also for addressing some of those issues that citizens brought to our attention about grass, and I know it's been raining. This is, I'm on the WSA Board Directors as well, and this is one of the rainiest seasons that we've had in a long, long time, so it was very difficult with a lot of grass growing, and Mr. Roberts has been very diligent and his staff about getting out and trying to cut overgrown grasses in the city right of way in between the rain, so we appreciate, you know, the grass that was cut on Hamilton Street and Chapel Hill Road and Doris and all those other streets, and I know that you're still working on it, Mr. Roberts, and I appreciate you keeping me abreast so that citizens feel safe when they're trying to drive and be able to see lights and signs. Also, the lights on Chapel Hill Road, someone called and asked me to thank you about that. And I did have a question about LMIG in those streets and when that resurfacing was going to continue. You have given us a list. City manager provided for us, so.
Yeah, and hopefully, we'll have that out to bid next week and have it presented to you at the end of, I remember, at the end of December, no, of July.
Of July.
To get that rolling.
Okay, well, that's exciting, more resurfacing. Thank you so much, Mr. ...
I think there's 20, 26, 27 streets total.
Mm-hmm, and they're in all the wards, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Tomorrow, our own Councilman Davis is going to participate in Dancing with the Stars. I know he's been soaking his feet and shoes are ready, so we're excited to see what he's going to do, and they're raising money for various charities in the community, so we're excited to see Mr. Davis. And I'm going to be fair, Mr. Davis, as a judge, we'll see what happens. Any other announcements? Chief, you have an announcement about the Police Department?
Madam Mayor, it's showtime.
Okay, I apologize. He wanted to say something. Go on, Mr. Davis.
It's showtime, Madam Mayor.
It's showtime?
Yes, ma'am. You know how we do it. Also coming up Saturday...
Oh, it's Juneteenth.
It's Juneteenth celebration, and we get one president go ahead and sign, and we will have a holiday for June 19th. And Saturday is a great day, 11 to 7:30, and a lot of the choirs are coming, my choir coming from my church in Norcross, and the host of vendors. It's going to be a fun day.
That'll be great. It's in the Plaza from 10 to 7:30.
Downtown O'Neil Plaza.
Yes, sir. And Chief, I'll wait till I come to you before, so you can make your announcements. I know you had a community meeting last week, so if you want to talk about that. So, we'll go on to updates from city staff, the Legal Department, Ms. Lynn Woodward?
No other business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Chief of Police, Chief Sparks?
Yes, ma'am. This week, we're having Dr. Cedric Alexander training the entire Police Department in mental preparedness in high-stress situations.
Ms. Woodward, can you move his microphone, the chief's microphone, so we can hear? Yes, sir.
This week, we're having Dr. Cedric Alexander to train the Police Department in preparedness in high-stress situation along with implicit and explicit biases in order that our officers will be able to make better decisions, you know, and being able to not make the decision based on any biases, that they will understand that issue that we see facing in other areas. So, we're just having ongoing training. Last week, we had the training with the FBI, dealing with mass casualties, and we had, I think, over 60, 60 officers from all over the country and Virgin Islands, and...
Wow.
So, we're doing a lot of, a lot of training and just staying prepared.
Good. Chief, what day is Dr. Alexander coming?
Oh, he's been here since, when, where, Tuesday?
You can't see my hands on my hips. You invited me last time. You forgot to send me...
Well, the last time, we, the last time, what it was, I think we trained the entire city.
Yes, sir.
So, we had the entire city. This time, we're just training dealing with the officers, because, you know, that's a thing throughout the country, there were officers, everybody talk about their biases, and so we, you know, so we just want our officers to be able to talk about it.
I'm former law enforcement, you know, I can always...
Well, he'll be there in the morning, I think about 9:30, he'll be doing another session, I think his last 9:30 and 1:00. So, if you want to come by, come on by.
I have public health tomorrow at 8:00.
Oh, okay.
And economic development at 10:00. But anyway, next time, please don't forget me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. That's all you had. You had something last week as well, didn't you? What was it, a community meeting?
I don't know if I have been doing so much.
I know, that's right.
I had the community meeting over at the Community House.
Thursday? Yes, sir.
Yes.
How was that?
Oh, it was outstanding.
At Hollister Street?
On Hollister Street, and we'll be, we'll be back over there next Thursday from 7:00 to 8:00.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Ren sent you...
Yes.
...a letter as well, thanking you for putting the speedometer on Rose Avenue.
Yes, I did.
So, hopefully, we'll get a report about how that's helping, helped to control some of the speed on that street.
Yes, yes.
Oh, great. Thank you so much, Chief. We'll move on then to our city manager.
Yes, ma'am. Just to remind you all, we start at 2:30 on Monday, and that's to allow you all to get a tour of the route, to show you the progress that's been made over the last, primarily, I would say, 14 days, so also to take a look at the streets that we just talked about and some other areas of concern. So, Mr. Roberts and I will meet you in front of the portico chair of this building between 2:00 and 2:15, and we'll be prepared for break, to break at 4:00, so we can have you all to have dinner before your 5:00 meeting. The other is, just for point of clarity, a couple items. The Public Safety Committee item, Mr. Davis, did you intend to put that on the consent?
Yes, if the council willing. Ms. Tamara, re-report, Ms. Tamara Manning.
For animal control?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll put that on the consent. And then on the other, Dr. Burdanley, for the items that you want on Monday for voting, I just want, point of clarity for myself and the clerk, the proclamation, we can draft that up in an agenda item. That one's easily read from their presentation, but the other item, number four, it says name a thoroughfare or walking trail after Frederick Douglass, and then Item A is a history trail. So, physically, we don't have the walking trail for the city of Douglasville as of yet.
Correct.
And so I don't know if that's where we're going to want to go, and, you know, sometimes a history trail is not a physical trail.
Right. I think the history trail that they were referring to was the one that the county has. They already have a historical trail.
Okay.
But the trail that we have discussed already, we had a study, is that when that comes to fruition, to be able to have a recognition of Frederick Douglass there.
Okay, so, Lynn, let's talk to find out if we have to have a physical location in order to do the listing, and then we'll, and I'll make some calls with Georgia Power, because of course, we have a Georgia Power easement to do that trail, so I'll have an answer for you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, and then we also, we've identified the trail, I know Ms. Patrice is not here, we haven't, we've identified where it could be.
That is correct.
It's not a physical trail.
That's right. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all you have, city manager?
Yes, ma'am, that was it.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, is, do we have any staff reports?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on then to comments from citizens and delegates. Now is the opportunity for any citizens who have sustained the meeting, if you would like to come forward, we ask you would come forward and give your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to present any business that has remained to the city of Douglasville.
I know you're all tired of hearing from me. Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way, Douglasville. But I'm here again about Durlie Lane. I went by there just before I came here, and still trucks are parked in, I mean, if they're not in the road, it was a miracle. And I know that the judge was supposed to hear it yesterday, but I don't know what happened. But there is a truck there, pickup truck, four-door pickup truck, and he's got this big, long thing on the back that he can put cars on and carry them, and it's sitting there all the time, right on the road. I mean, I came April of 2020 about this.
Yes, ma'am.
And now it's June 2021, and it doesn't seem, I mean, I don't know what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. Of course, like we said with our code enforcement report last week, that if they're written up for a violation, they're given to the judge, and he makes a determination. So, since court was yesterday, I don't have a report on that. When we do get a report, I can have that, is it public, can we do public records for that, city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll make certain I give you...
I saw the judge in the grocery store on Tuesday and told him that it was supposed I saw the judge in the grocery store on Tuesday and told him that it was supposed to be coming before him and explained to him what the problem was. So hopefully, he did something about it, but I don't know.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much.
And then the other thing is the garbage in the Shane's Shopping Center. I went by there yesterday and I have pictures and I've showed some of the council people. It's a mess. I mean, why in the world can code enforcement not do something to the people that own that, that they don't keep it cleaned up? I mean, I, I thought of going out there with my trash bag and my pickup things and then somebody said, no, that's private property, you can't do that. But it's a mess.
I don't have an answer about that, Mr., or do they have the city receptacles or the trash?
They have, yes, they do. They have one.
Okay.
And then they have another one that I don't know who picks up. It doesn't say city on it.
Okay, it might be private. Mr. Roberts?
Greg Roberts, Public Services Director, six six nine five Church Street. Yes, she mentions a particular restaurant, but this is actually a complex owned by a company out of Atlanta.
Yes, sir.
And so naming the restaurants, they really have no control over it there. But the city has been in communication with the owner. He has been before the judge. I have spoken to him on numerous times to encourage him to have his day-to-day contractor to clean these areas up. So there are several restaurants that use the dumpster corral there. I can't tell you how the garbage is getting on the ground. It's not always quite as much as gets reported, but it's more than, than we need. So you don't want garbage on the ground, right?
Yes, sir.
I can't tell you how it's getting there. I just know it's not getting picked up as quickly as it should be. It's usually boxes and, and just bags and things. And so I'm not condoning what's happening there. I think they're probably the victim of some illegal dumping. So sort of at a loss on my end, because we provide the service that the customer asks for. I've not seen any, any evidence that makes me think that they're not getting enough service, and I know they increased service after their court appearance about a month or so ago. But we did not force them. We have forced businesses to increase service. But I've not seen the need for that at that location. So I, I'm at a loss for why the garbage gets on the ground.
Yes, sir.
It, it's, it's not anything that I would condone, but it, it, there is debris on the ground.
Do they need another receptacle, another trash container?
I don't think so. I think it's just a matter of the property owner making sure that his contractor cleans it. The properties are clean there. You literally have to go around to the back and go to that corral and go and look in the corral to see the debris. You will not see it from the road, you will not see it from the restaurants, you will not see it anywhere on that property unless you literally go back there into the backside of it and go and like, look in. You'll see it here, but you won't see it over there. I'm not condoning what's there. I'm not saying there's nothing there. You'll go right now and you'll find it. Everybody's welcome. I can take you there and show you myself. I've got pictures.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not standing here telling the council that there's not some debris there. What I am telling you is you will not, if you drive by the front side of it, you will not see it. You have to go into the backside of that corral and literally almost go in the corral to see it.
And I would just say this for the elected officials, the process that staff is handling, we're working through the process. So I, I think what Mr. Roberts is saying is that at, at this point, it's gone through code enforcement, it's gone through the courts. It is of the property owner to be sanctioned by the courts to, to do more, but we're doing everything that we can and it has gone through the process, including our judicial system.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
That's an answer. Yes, sir, Mr. Watts?
I just, Mr. Roberts, just, you don't have to come down, but you suspect potential illegal dumping. Do, do the property owners, have they complained about that? And if, if property owners are the victim of illegal dumping, can they not install cameras and nip this in the bud?
They're aware that that could be a potential, but for this conversation, I would give that about five percent.
I got you.
I think, I think the overwhelming majority is just carelessness on many people that put the garbage in. If you go to any similar development in the city, for the most part, unless they have a compactor, you go to any of them, you'll see similar debris sometimes in the corral area. You'll see it in almost every location.
You'll go in tomorrow.
This one just gets highlighted a lot later.
Okay, thank you.
And the only reason I call it Shane's is because that's the first store in the shopping center. But it's not all Shane's stuff, because
Yes, ma'am.
It was, the Subway had it there, Shane's had it there, one of the beauty shops had it, I could read their names on the boxes. The massage parlor, and I went to, I visited each one of those places with pictures of their stuff laying out there. And they all assured me, in fact, Shane's went right out and picked their stuff up and put it in the trash.
Yes, ma'am.
They said, people are just lazy from our store and don't put it in there.
Okay.
But, you know, what do you do? Is it fine?
So, so Ms. Welch, you, your, your thinking is that the employees of the various businesses there may not always get the bag of trash in the dumpster, it may just be sitting beside the dumpster.
It's just easier.
Rather than put it in the dumpster.
And I, I sent the pictures to Shane's corporate office also. I mean, you know, this is crazy.
Okay, so we, we'll do our best and as the City Manager said, we've gone through the process and after that, our hands are tied. We can't legislate behavior. But we can definitely stay on
It's horrible.
The companies. Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We'll make certain that code enforcement and everyone, as it relates to the city, helps to keep them to stay in line, to keep our community.
One of the businesses brought it to my attention, is what happened.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they, well, at that point, the dumpsters weren't getting dumped and they didn't have any place to put their stuff. They were keeping it in their back room, which if the state came and, you know, looked at their restaurant, they'd be having a fit with them.
Yes, ma'am.
So they said to me, can't you do something for us?
Well, Mr. Roberts is sure as I said, he'll go by. If they need more opportunities for them to go back again, then we'll do that on the city's end.
Well, I can tell them to contact him maybe instead of telling me all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other citizens that need to come forward, if you'd like to come forward and give your name and address for the record? Good evening, Mr. Peniman.
Good afternoon, City Council, Staff, Chief Sparks. City Manager, Marsha Hampton, thank you guys for being here. My name is Brandon Peniman. I live at ten eighty-two Abington Court, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three four. Today, I'm gonna be speaking from two separate hats. First, I'll be coming on behalf of Commissioner Henry Mitchell, who couldn't be here today. But he asked me to speak on his behalf. Upon a request from Commissioner Mitchell, there was an invitation extended to Ms. Nettie Douglas to be present here today to speak her heart on behalf of her great-great-grandfather Frederick Douglass. Unfortunately, she was unable to attend because they are currently, she's currently in Baltimore where they're honoring her great-great-grandfather, where the city of Baltimore has decided to name their newest tunnel after Frederick Douglass, because of all his accomplishments throughout the nation. Ms. Nettie stated that when she does return, she will be more than happy to come and speak to you guys personally. But she said that it was okay if we made some statements on her behalf today. She said that although she, although she was unable to attend, she sends her well wishes. And she also sends her gratitude to the Board of Commissions and Dr. Danley for continuing to keep her great-great-grandfather's legacy alive. Finally, she did confirm that she is in total support of agenda item, what was the number, what was the agenda item number for the proposal? For the proclamation?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, it's not written yet, but the, what was presented was to have a proclamation for twenty twenty-two?
For Black History Month.
Right, so she said that she was in agreeance and she confirmed that she's in total support of the walking trails, the monument, the possible streets being named, and also the city recognizing her great-great-grandfather through a holiday in February. She also mentioned that she would be in support of the Highway ninety-two bypass being named after, after her great-great-grandfather. She said that she thinks that would represent him very well. Now, changing hats, to me personally, representing myself personally, as a planning and zoning board member for Douglas County and District One, I'm just coming this afternoon to speak on behalf of the item that was mentioned today. I am in total support of there being a possible holiday, of there also being a monument or a trail, and also possible streets. But I also want to just put my personal interest in and say that I believe that the entire Highway ninety-two project, the bypass should be named after Frederick Douglass. I feel that Mr. Steele has a building here, nothing against Mr. Steele and his family at all, but I think he already has a presence here, he has an entire building named after him at Douglas County High School, which I attended. And I feel that this would be a great representation to honor Frederick Douglass and his legacy that he left here on a higher scale, aside from just a side street, because I don't think he was a side street type of guy. I don't think the legacy that he left was a side street type of legacy. I believe that it was a main corridor, major legacy that he left within our community, major enough to the point that this community, as mentioned earlier, was at one time named after him. So I don't think that he deserves just a side street. I think that he deserves to have this major highway, which is impacting new horizons in the north side. I think that he should have that entire corridor, that entire new Highway ninety-two bypass project named after him. Those are my personal sentiments, and I thank you guys so much for being here and continuing to do the work that you do on the regular. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peniman. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. I know. Take your time, Lisa.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Even though, I know.
Miss, you have give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is Lisa Cooper and I reside at seventeen thirty-six Quinnberry Court, Douglasville. And I know that all the council members have seen my columns, have seen my link with all my research and everything on it, but I did want to make a public statement so that other citizens could hear. For the past eleven years, I have researched and written and published about Old Campbell County and Douglas County history. In my weekly history column in the Douglas County Sentinel and a couple of books as well. But I do have a few points to make. The handwritten document shown in the presentation looks to be a section of the law and shows Douglas written with a double S. Apparently, for some, that is the only proof needed to indicate who the namesake of Douglas County was, but it's not that simple. Because my time is limited, I wanted to start with what I consider the most important piece of evidence we have regarding the namesake of Douglas County. Dr. William Stovall Zellers was the state representative for Campbell in eighteen seventy, and he is the one who submitted the bill to form our county. The honor to name the county fell to Dr. Zellers, and we have actual proof as to who he named the county for and why. At my research link, I share images from the book, Georgia's General Assembly eighteen eighty to eighteen eighty-one Biographical Sketches. Within the published bio piece, it says, and I quote, "In eighteen sixty, Dr. Zellers was an ardent supporter of Stephen A. Douglas." In eighteen seventy. And in eighteen seventy, when he introduced the bill to create Douglas, he at the same time named it in honor of that great statesman. That should be all we need, but I'll continue. Getting back to the double S, you saw on the one document page that was presented tonight. According to his biographers, Stephen A. Douglas began his life with his last name also bearing a double S, just like Frederick Douglass. At some point, he was elected, he elected, to remove the double S from his last name. But you can find all sorts of mentions of him and other family members in the newspapers through the years with his name bearing a double S. I provided at least three instances at my research link, all occurring in eighteen seventy, and posed this question. How are we to know with certainty that the person who wrote the double S on the handwritten page presented here tonight was thinking of Stephen A. Douglas or Frederick Douglass? We don't know. But what Dr. Zellers told us in that bio piece was who he named the county for and why. We can be certain regarding the county's namesake, regardless of handwriting mistakes, printing errors on maps, or typesetting errors in newspapers. My second point involves the myth that a ruse had to be created to get the legislation passed in a radical Republican-controlled legislature. In eighteen seventy, the radical Republicans in the state legislature were a mix of whites and African-Americans. Dr. Zellers was a radical Republican. The ruse story falls completely apart when you realize there was no African-American majority to have to appease. The namesake for the county was never a contentious point at all. This is clearly seen when you look at the House and the Senate journals for eighteen seventy. Think of these journals as the Legislative Dear Diary, where every action taken on the floor, including conversations and debates, were recorded by stenographers. During each legislative session, these recorded notes were published daily in the major newspapers across the state. I provided all the pages dealing with the Douglas County bill at my research link from the journals and the newspaper mentions from August eighteen seventy, when the bill was introduced until it was signed by Governor Bullock in October. The only conversations about this bill in either source involved the current number of counties in the state and that if more counties were added, the pile of money used to pay the legislators would be reduced by the number of new counties added that year. There were also conversations regarding the fact that the census data was not yet in and the new county would have no representation for a bit. But that was eventually solved, but it did take several months. It seems to me that if a group of ex-Confederate soldiers from former slave-holding families had wanted to name a county for Frederick Douglass five years after the Civil War, there would have been a newspaper mention somewhere, but we have no mention. We have newspaper, we have newspaper mentions in the paper in real time while that bill was moving through the Georgia General Assembly. Believe me, the papers would have printed any sensational news. They didn't. And thoughts that this was all hidden later? How could all the printed newspapers during the time the bill was active and thousands of printed House and Senate journals, printed in eighteen seventy at the end of the session, be taken up years later and changed? An impossible task. Doesn't it make sense that if there was an African-American majority in the legislature in eighteen seventy and they had to be appeased, then they would have required all the counties that were named that year and formed to be named for African-Americans? But they weren't. Dodge County, formed in eighteen seventy, was named for a white Yankee miner and industrialist. Rockdale County, formed in eighteen seventy, was named for a church which was named for a vein of granite. And then McDuffie County, also formed in eighteen seventy, it was named for a white man, a Southerner, a fan of states' rights and governor of South Carolina in the eighteen forties. I could go on, but I'll stop here. I appreciate each one of you allowing me the time to speak. And I want to thank you for what each and every one of you do in serving the city of Douglasville and Douglas County. You are appreciated. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. We appreciate your information and I did allow you to go over a little bit.
Thank you, I do appreciate that. I pared it down as much as I could.
I know. We had a presentation earlier this evening and it was a little longer than five minutes.
And, and I do want to make it known publicly, I have nothing, nothing against Frederick Douglass, not a thing. I was a classroom teacher. I taught Frederick Douglass, big hero of mine, no problem at, at all. Those of you who know me personally, and some of you do, you know I'm very passionate about our local history, but I'm more passionate about being correct.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have no problem with anything being named for Frederick Douglass. But I'm ninety-nine point nine nine percent certain the namesake of the county was Stephen A. Douglas.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate that. Any other comments from citizens and delegates, please come forward. Our school board, we have two school board, school board members here this evening, the Chair, Ms. Tracy Ruckert Shaw, and Mr. Vitoron Caldwell, please, thank you so much for what you do, being elected. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Tracy, I'm sorry. Good evening, I'm here as a citizen tonight, so Tracy Ruckert Shaw. And it's forty sixty-one High Country Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. And my comments are tonight, I trust the city and the citizens to make the decision as to the naming of Highway ninety-two and to the other things. I have no input on, I have no opinion, official opinion on that, so I trust you all to make that judgment. But what I do want to come forward and say, I want to discuss some of the things, and Lisa and I serve on the history board together, and she is a highly respected person in this community, and I do respect her research. But I am also, for some of you who may know, also a researcher. So I want to just address a couple of things as it relates to the creation, since we're talking, because I thought it was, the, the comments were gonna be germane to the city of Douglasville, but since we're talking about the county, I'll go ahead and just put my two cents in. So let's start back with the county, in eighteen sixty-eight, there was legislation put There was legislation put forward to expel African-Americans from office. They were elected, 32 of them in 1868. In order for that legislation to be discussed and then eventually voted on, it was had to be approved to come before the body in the House of Representatives. Representative W. S. Zellers was instrumental in voting against them and one of them expelled from office. He voted to have it introduced. W. S. Zellers voted to also not allow them to vote in their own, in their own case as far as dismissal. They were not allowed to vote and he voted in the affirmative to have them removed. So eventually they did. So cut to 1870. And I will say I am very familiar with the book that Lisa referenced, which is Dr. Zellers', his autobiography. And you should know that Dr. Zellers, one, was a highly literate physician who graduated from Atlanta Medical College in 1865. The the book that she's referencing also states that he was an ardent supporter of Stephen A. Douglas. He supported his bid for president, for presidency against Abraham Lincoln. In addition to the text, which she did not mention, it does state explicitly that he that he was not a radical Republican and Lisa just stated that he was, but it's in that text.
Chairman, please just address to us, we asked, I mean, you weren't here for the protocol, but not to.
I wasn't. I apologize. So who do I need to, just, just.
Me or the council?
So, well, so you, yeah. So I'm just, I'm just saying of what I heard as a citizen, as a citizen. So let's cut to 1870, when Douglas County was, it was time or the citizens wanted that this county formed. What ended up happening is you were at the mercy because the county, the state was underdeveloped and the roadways were compromised, so you were at the mercy of whoever could show up for your vote. And so if you wanted your legislation moved from the House into the Senate, you had to get enough approvals to do so. The one thing that we know that when the African-Americans were reinstated in 1870, they came to session almost always and they voted in a block. When Douglas County came up for its vote, it was short votes. So they needed, because of the way they interpreted the Constitution, a minimum of 59 votes for it to pass. Douglas County only received 66 votes. Of the 66 votes, 19 of those in the House came from the African-American bloc. Had they not voted and helped Representative Zellers, then we would not have the county named Douglas. We wouldn't even have a county today because it wouldn't have passed from the House into the Senate. So I'm saying all that to say, you couple that with him having an issue, a challenge with being able to get the legislation passed. All of the African-American legislators voted in support of Douglas. And of the counties that were, that I heard named tonight, only one came forward from a person who voted against their expulsion. All of the other counties that were, that were created in 1870 that were mentioned earlier, each of those had a person proposing that legislation that voted in support of them staying in office. The only one who did not and who would have had trouble was Representative Zellers. So a deal being made. And so from that, when he proposed it in writing, which we have documents, he submitted the proposal with Douglas spelled with two S's. It is true, when Stephen Douglas was a child, his name was that. But ever since he was a public figure, his name was on the ballot for for the election. Ever since he was a public figure, he was only known as Douglas with one S. And his ardent supporter, Representative Zellers, knew how to spell his name and he was a very literate physician. So I say all of that to say, we can go back and forth, but I want to say that the handwritten documents, the primary documents, are the ones that the governor signed. And those are the one, and he signed Douglas County into law with two S's, not one. So I know my time is up, but I wanted to just say that and put that on the record, that that research is solid.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you have five minutes to speak to us. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
My, oh, you already know my name. Henry Mitchell IV, 2646 Dale Ridge Drive. Well, Tracy kind of said everything for, I was going to say. So ultimately, I am opposed, not opposed, but I am for the Highway 92 being Frederick Douglass. One point that I want to kind of bring up. We talk about Frederick Douglass a lot, but Frederick Douglass by blood is a white man. He's a white man, right? Stephen A. Douglas was a racist. We don't want to speak about it, but he was a racist. He was going against Abraham Lincoln, trying to, he was for slavery. Let's just put that out there. So our county was named by a racist. Ultimately, we can change that. Easy. So with us, eventually Frederick Douglass, excuse me, Douglas will be two S's. I kind of feel it in my spirit. But when we look at that, it's a win for all people, not just black people or white people. Yes, he had melanin skin, but by blood, he was a white man. And so I am for the proposal that LaShawn, Mr. LaShawn, Ms. LaShawn, proposed. And I pray that we all can just come together as one, because right now we are against each other. It should be no bickering back and forth between each other. We all should be on one accord, one peace, and one time. And that's going to be it. I thank you guys for speaking and thank, oh, yeah, one other thing, one other thing. Since I got time, how much time I got left? I got a little time left. Appreciate you. Thank you guys for getting the lights. I know I sent the email out. You got the lights. I appreciate that. And I heard Mayor Rochelle Robinson talk about the grass. I appreciate that as well. You guys are definitely working hard for the community and I appreciate that. I don't know kind of what happened in the midst, but you guys are solving the problem. That's what it's all about, solving a problem, not creating an issue. And I remember Mr. Miller, the last time I was here, he kind of spoke about how all bones aren't broken. You remember that? Right? So let's fix this bone that is broken with us as black people. And so I promise you this, if you put Frederick Douglass as a Highway Passe-92, the community is going to chip all of you guys as one, not as individuals, but as one as a whole. Mr. Steele's, like Brandon said, he has a building. I went to Douglas County as well, you know, so. Mr. Steele's cool, but Frederick Douglass is the first step to us becoming as one, as black and white people and all citizens of the county. And I don't know if you, well, you guys ain't had nothing to do with the statue removal. I was out there. You probably seen me on the news. So the Confederate statue got removed, so we're moving in the right direction as a county. And so I appreciate all your hard work and dedication when it comes to Douglas County and Douglasville. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mitchell, do we have any other comments from citizens and delegates? Thank you. Not seeing any then. We do have an executive session, so I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss disposition of real property after a reef recess. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Esserson. Probably moved in second to adjourn to executive session to discuss disposition of real property after a short recess. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have, but we are adjourned to executive session after a short recess.